If I could just make a quick comment before we start the meeting. I've had several people point this out. We've been saying the Pledge of Allegiance incorrectly. And I was told a couple of years ago by some veterans of foreign wars that when the, in the Eisenhower administration, when they added the "under God," there is no comma between "one nation, under God." It is one whole sentence. And I think the reason everybody pauses there is because when you learned it maybe in grade school and they were teaching you the Pledge of Allegiance, you had to learn it in pieces and it was easy to pause right there. But now that we know it by heart, and it is dear to our heart, I think we should say it correctly. And I'm sure that the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts of America will appreciate this when I say that I'm not rushing through the Pledge of Allegiance. It's just that you say "one nation, under God." And every time that we say that here, we hear an echo. Because we say it. I've trained these people up here. I've trained them now. We say "one nation, under God," and we can hear everybody in the audience, "under God, under God, under God." Anyway, so I'm not rushing through the Pledge of Allegiance. I am just trying to respect those that corrected me that we are saying it incorrectly. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox now. Moving right along, at this time, we have the Citizens Forum. This is where anyone from the public can come up and speak on any topic not on today's agenda. If you would like to share something with us, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. If not, we will proceed with awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the day of January 18, 2010, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Salina. Jenna Rivers and Jara Cooper will read their proclamation.
I told the young ladies I would come up with them because I am Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee this year. But I assured them that you would love them.
Proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas, the 18th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas, Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood. And whereas, the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all God's children. Now therefore, I Lucy Larson, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 18, 2010, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s commemoration day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 11, 2010. Lucy Larson, Mayor, City of Salina.
Do you have any activities or events planned for the day or the week?
Yes. Thursday, January 14, and Friday, January 15, Queen Nurr, who is a storyteller, will be in Salina schools. Saturday, January 16, there is a presentation/tea at the Quail United Methodist Church at 2:00 p.m. Also, that night at 6:30 at Quail United Methodist Church, there is a community potluck dinner. Sunday, January 17, Martin Luther King Jr. Day Celebration Service at 3:30 at the Quail United Methodist Church, and all are invited. Also, Monday, January 4. Saturday, January 9, January 11, which is a Monday, and January 16, which is a Saturday, there is choir rehearsal from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And January 18, at noon, there is a celebration service at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church. Kansas Wesleyan is also having some activities. Thursday, January 14 through Monday, January 18, residency activities featuring artistic director and choreographer Kevin Iaga. Jeff is working with the K WU dance team and cheerleaders. There's also a dance workshop and a master class. And Monday, June 18, at noon, Kansas Wesleyan University will have a celebration service at the United Methodist Church.
The young ladies also have buttons for the commissioners. And I'd just like for everyone to know that these are our guest speakers. They are keynote speakers this year for the celebration.
I recognize her beautiful faces from the paper this morning. I think that's wonderful that the two of you are going to be the speakers. As a matter of fact, which one of you said that you were touched by one of his quotes? And it is not the most famous quote. It is a different quote. I was reading the article and thinking, "Oh, I know what quote she's going to say." And then it was totally, totally different. And it was, was it you that said you were touched by that quote, by Mr. King?
Yeah. We actually found, like, we started looking into the subject of human trafficking and found it on a website. And so we thought it would tie in nicely with the theme, and yeah.
And what was the quote?
Injustice. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere.
Yeah. Very good. Congratulations, girls. I also have a signed proclamation here for you.
Chair, start there and get buttons there.
We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will proceed with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 28, 2009. Item 6.2, Resolution 10-6696, appointing Jim Licklider to the Human Relations Commission. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 10-6698, establishing various fees for services. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 10-6695, approving the Salinas-Saleen County Solid Waste Management Committee's plan review for 2009.
Is there something from the consent agenda that a commissioner wishes to have pulled? I have a couple of questions regarding the fees for services. Should I pull it, or should I just ask the questions? It has to do with the pool rates.
If, Mayor, if you think that there may be some discourse on the issue, you probably ought to pull it. If it's more just a kind of a statement or something, then we could deal with it in the motion.
Let me go ahead and pull it at this time, just so that I can feel free to ask questions about it and not feel that I'm doing something unorthodox. So which one is that? 6.3? Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve the others.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda after removing item 6.3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda as presented with the exception of 6.3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0. On 6.3, I had a couple people, I guess these, the aquatic facility rates have been floating around out there, or there's been some discussion on it. My question, would this be for you, Rod, or who do I ask?
Possible.
Is Steve here? Oh, he's here too, so.
Yeah, he's back here.
Okay, who wants to come to the guillotine? Okay. My question on this is, is the whole issue with the group pass. When you take, I've had several daycare providers, these are the ones that are concerned about this. They want to know if they would qualify for a group pass, being that they have one adult and four children. And then they understand that if there's one adult and four children, five children, that the extra child will have to buy that $35 pass.
That's correct.
Are you taking a picture of that daycare provider with the six kids, or however many?
They would be individual pictures, individual cards.
Okay.
So that the whole group of five does not have to attend at the same time. The purchase would have to be made at that time. We'll take individual pictures, so that if two of the kids or if one of the adults could go at any time, they'll have individual passes.
Okay. Now, if she has a family, and so she buys a group pass for herself and her two children, how does that work? Does she need two of them?
Mm-hmm.
She has to, well, she'd have to buy two passes and then just use the one with her and her children, and then the separate one with her, with her
With the other group, yes.
daycare kids. Is that correct?
Right.
She'd just buy additional youth passes, right?
Or she could buy?
Yeah, up to three.
She could.
Depending on how many children they would have, yes.
So after four, you're only allowed a maximum of three after that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I think that was all that should call to my attention. Oh, and on the senior rate, is that AARP 50, or do I not qualify? Is that the standard, 62, 65?
62.
Okay, so I got to wait 12 years. Okay. Okay, those are my main questions, because I've had daycare providers and families that are confused about how these passes are going to work, so. Any other questions?
And then at a later time, would be a discussion on any group rates or after-hours rates, or things along those lines? Where does that fall?
Commissioner, you're talking about as far as if an organization wanted to rent the facility for an evening?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, Steve, what's the, how are you, have you decided how that we would want to charge that, I presume like per hour?
We have looked at some of the other aquatic facilities that do rent, and primarily Derby, I think, is the example that rents to large groups. And they have some fees that basically with the makeup of the layout of the facility, it's going to require almost full staffing. The only thing you could isolate would be the 25-meter in the pool and the diving well. So you'd have to almost staff up completely to have a group. So it's going to basically turn that into a large, large group, which with a lot of cost to it. And I think if I'm correct on Derby's, was it 1,500? Someplace in that $1,500 range for, to rent that pool facility because of the number of staff required. So that eliminates the, you know, the birthday party with 10 kids primarily, unless they wanted to pay that, a pretty high rate. The other thing we're working on would be group purchases, working with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're going to meet with the motels and do packages where they may, they want to buy in bundles of, let's say, 50, 100, 250 tickets. They would buy them with some discount, and then they would market those as part of their promotional overnight stays program. We haven't set those yet, but we know that it's going to be a bulk-type purchasing that we're working with the Chamber on right now.
Well, and I heard you on the radio this morning, Steve, so I think you did a great job bringing everybody up to date on that. Something you said is why I had a phone call just this afternoon. They were a little confused about some of these, the group rates and how that's going to work. The other question I have is, and refresh my memory, we did not approve the spray park on the outside of the pool?
That's correct. That was, that was one of the two alternates, and the commission chose not to approve that.
Okay, I couldn't remember that part.
The other one was the parking lot. Those two alternates.
Right, yeah, I forgot about the spray park. Any other questions for Mr. Snyder? Thank you. Any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 106698, establishing various fees for services in the comprehensive fee schedule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 10-6698, establishing various fees for services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0. There's no development business, so we will move on to administration.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 106697, authorizing an agreement for engineering services to complete water rights services for Phase 2 of the Old River Channel Master Plan.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. HDR Engineering Incorporated will act as the city's water rights consultant for the Old River Channel Master Plan. HDR is familiar with the city's current water rights, our municipal water conservation plan, and the flow of water through the Old Smoky Hill River Channel. Design Studios West is the prime consultant for the Old River Channel Master Plan, and they have reviewed HDR's scope of services and schedule and agree with it. HDR's scope of services summarizes the tasks necessary to determine the volume or rate of water that can be appropriated for a recreational use, and then it also takes the steps necessary to prepare a recreational water right application for the Division of Water Resources processing. The agreement allows a consultant to bill on a monthly basis for hours worked and actual reimbursable expenses up to amount not to exceed of $25,195. A budget allocation of $25,000 for engineering services is included in the Utilities Department operating budget and will be utilized to fund this project. Staff recommends that the City Commission adopt Resolution Number 10-6697, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated to complete water rights services for Phase 2 Old River Channel Master Plan in an amount not to exceed of $25,195. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I understand that this is all that's going to happen in that timeline?
Yes.
This is for everything from now till June the 18?
That's correct.
Any other questions of Ms. Tasker?
Yeah, from this, water rights, that'll define to what extent different things can occur. And then Design Studios will take that and work that into possible scopes of, then what'll be able to happen. I guess the question is of various things, possible whitewater rapids and kayaking and wider channel, deeper channel, all those. This will set the tone then for what they're going to be able to design and develop and say, these are the potentials?
That is correct. And we'll provide information as far as durations for less than desirable flows, durations with higher flows, and then they'll be able to incorporate that in to their concept for their master plan.
Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I think before we take action, I'd like to just state that I'll vote against this consistent to what I voted against previously on it. I understand the need for it, but I just need to reiterate that I feel that now's not quite the best economic time for this, because it will be a long time until we receive development and community benefit from the type of investment that will come out of this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution 10-6697, which authorizes you to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering, for engineering services to complete water rights services for Phase 2 of the Old River Channel Master Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 10-6697, authorizing the mayor to enter to agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., to complete water rights services for Phase 2 of the Old River Channel Master Plan in the amount not to exceed $25,195. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes 3 to 1 with Commissioner Jennings voting nay. That's a lot to remember.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 106699, authorizing a professional services contract for a medical director of emergency medical services.
Chief?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and I'm certainly glad to be here. Last time I had an agenda, I had my booked out, and manager had to carry the load for me.
We're keeping track of that, yes, we remember.
Yeah, I was embarrassed. I got back to the station, and those guys says, "Well, how'd it go?" I said, "Was on the consent agenda." And they said, "We're talking about it right now on the TV."
Well, you had a consent and then a separate agenda item.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I really apologize for that.
Okay, your boss filled in for you quite nicely.
I will never, ever do that again. Boy, that was bad.
You're still having nightmares.
Oh, I'm telling you, I can't live it down. It haunts me. Today, I have an item before you for renewal of the medical director's contract. You know, about two and a half years ago, Ramon Schmidt, who was our medical director for a lengthy number of years, decided to retire. And we were in the dilemma of who are we going to get to as our medical director for our ambulance service? And if people don't realize it, we have to operate under a medical director, a licensed physician, to oversee our operations, to approve our protocols, to do all of the things that we need them to do for us. And we're responsive to that. I mean, we work for the physician, the physician works for us. And in that teamwork kind of a scenario, we get the best for our residents in the term of a medical service delivery and health in general, for that matter. We were very blessed at the time that we had a number of applicants. One of those was Dr. Sean Harrington. Now, Dr. Harrington, when he came in to talk with me and the rest of the officers, we were very impressed with his background. He comes, came to us with a military background, came to us with a lot of experience in emergency medicine. And so that kind of, that kind of experience of knowing what the real world throws at paramedics is something that you can't teach someone and they can't acquire out of a book. And when you're fortunate enough to get somebody like that, it really helps the, helps the situation, because the physician knows what the paramedic is struggling with. And so with that, we came to the City Commission a little over two and a half years ago, and we hired Dr. Harrington as our medical director. You know, if I would have been on the stick, I would have brought, a year later than that, I would have come back to you and told you how astounded I was at the wonderful job he was doing for us, because we made some tremendous advances in how we deliver emergency medicine in Salina and Saleen County. We're able to rapidly change our protocols when new studies come out, when things of that nature are seen and proven by the medical community that has a benefit in how our people are treated, how well they, how well they bounce back from medical emergencies. That's really the test of a service, is people that actually walk out of the hospital when we're done. And we're very blessed to get into that with him. And what I saw in the first year was that innovative kind of thing, you know, what do we need to do? What's working out there, talking to the paramedics, training with them, showing them some of the best medical procedures, reviewing equipment, approving protocols. Here we are, two and a half years later, and Dr. Harrington sent me a letter, which he requested we review how much his compensation is. And many people don't realize that he is a city employee for the purposes of the contract. We hire him under contract, but within this contract, he has to buy his own medical malpractice insurance. So he has to cover that cost. And there's a trade-off. You know, it's really easy to find a medical director who doesn't want to be on the cutting edge of medical care, because they really will lag behind the technology and behind the times. And they will be, they will say, "Well, let everybody else do this, and then if it works, maybe 10 years later, we'll do that." And what you sacrifice is the people who would have survived over that 10 years, because many of the things that we do and the speed at which we change our protocols translates into survivability for patients. It means a great deal to us, means a great deal to people that come up and tell us, "Thank you." What they're really doing is thanking, thanking only the paramedic, but they're thanking the system that we have in place that allows them to do their job. One of the things I really like about Dr. Harrington is his ability to communicate with the paramedics and be open to when our protocols don't work. It's easy, you know, when we talk about protocols, it's easy to train people to protocols, to do A, B, and C. But what happens if B doesn't work? What if the paramedic sees something that's going on that he needs to step outside a protocol to save this person's life? That's what we want them to do, is have the freedom to call the emergency room and talk to Dr. Harrington, or get medical control on the line and say, "Hey, this is not working. Let us change this." And we get the approval right there to make the change. And in many, many cases, people come out way better for that. We're able to have a level of survivability that just, that just really blows me away. So when he brought this request to us to examine that, I really didn't have a problem. I highlighted some things in the blue sheet for you to look at, the deployment of the EZIOs, the RIS training and protocol oversight, the King Tubes. There are several things that people at home would not have any idea what these are about. But these are very technically specific, either protocols or pieces of equipment that paramedics are trained to use that are capable of saving your life in the right instances. The implementation of CCR. We were one of the top, one of the first departments in the state to go to CCR, which is cardio-sleebro resuscitation, which is a variant of CPR. I think you'll see that change over time out in the populace. We will talk less about CPR a little bit and more about CCR, and not hesitating on chest compressions and things like we've done in the past. Some of the data points to that, the benefits of continuing those chest compressions, regardless of the ventilations and things of that nature. And lastly, the thing that I brought up was, or at least outlined in here, and I could have done twice as many if I'd have spent more time on it. But the thing about the H1N1 vaccinations, you know, when Yvonne Gibbons was talking about, the Director of the Health Department was talking about being able to round up enough nurses and be able to get enough people to do H1N1 vaccinations. I walked out of the executive staff meeting with the city manager, and I thought, you know, we can do that. We can play a big role in this for our community. But I've got to have a couple of things in place. Number one, I've got to have the cooperation and, the Health Department to say, "Yeah, this is a really good deal. You need to help us with this. We could use your help." The second thing I needed to have in place was a protocol in which our medical director, Dr. Harrington, could buy off on, that that would give us the license, basically, the authority to conduct vaccinations. And that occurred very, very quickly. And I think when we look at times like it's influenza and things in the future, whether they call them pandemics or whatever, what we want to do is have a, is have a force of paramedics that we can deploy very quickly in our community, whether it's a natural disaster, whether it's a pandemic, or anything else, because we can make a significant impact on the field, make his life a lot easier in the emergency room when they get there, and produce a better patient outcome. So it's with all of that that I've studied this and brought this to you today. It basically just reauthorizes the medical director's contract, raises his salary to an annual salary of $30,000 a year. I'd like to invite Sean. I'd like, if you don't know Sean Harrington, if you don't know him personally from the community, because he has long ties here, and you see him in the emergency room, and one of the things that really impressed me when they opened up the new emergency room, and it probably comes from his military background, I walked in the emergency room, and here's this board up there that has all of these specialties that are on-call, they're either available or not available, and all these kinds of things that are in place up on the board. Great planning. He runs a great facility, great emergency room, and we're certainly pleased to have him as a medical director. So with that, I'll let you ask him any questions of him or myself and respond to those.
I know, I know a musician that looks just like him, so he must have a twin somewhere.
Yes.
The other, the only question I had is, I realize that this is compensation for everything that you do. When you go to continuing education seminars or conferences so that you have this cutting-edge on whatever's coming up, does this compensation help pay for that, or does that also come out of your pocket?
That comes out of my pocket.
Okay, so this compensation is just basically for everything that Chief Mulican just detailed on here, and I see where you hold and want to continue holding weekly meetings with the EMS team and...
That's something Dr. Schmidt had started with paramedics, and that's something we've continued, a weekly DOC 100 meeting on Thursday afternoons. And it really is a time for me to meet with them and talk about any issues, any particular runs that they've had, that they've had particular questions about, or maybe good or bad patient outcomes, that they were just wanting to know what else could they have done. It's a good time for us to get together and talk and...
I never had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Schmidt, but where, where do you, where's your office? Are you at?
I'm in the emergency room. I'm the medical director of the emergency room.
At the hospital.
And I'm an emergency room physician.
And then this is just something that you're coordinating also in addition, or in continuation with the fire department?
Correct.
Okay, with the EMS.
Yes.
That was my question.
I just want to make sure this isn't something we'd normally put out to bid, that we're okay just renegotiating and extending the contract?
Yeah, I think as Chief Mulican mentioned, we did request proposals when we went through this, when Dr. Schmidt had, was, chose not to participate anymore. Because it is such a key professional service, it's something that I think if we're happy and we believe we're able to move forward with, we wouldn't feel the need every time to do that. It's not to say that, you know, three years from now, or six years from now, or 10 years from now, there might not be a reason, that we may just simply choose to do that, even if we feel we're where we want to be. But I'd like to, I think what's, one of the things that's really important, if we are moving forward and we're doing some of these new things, is to have some continuity, because it does take a while for someone else to train up and for people, the paramedics, to get used to the style and vice versa and all that. So I feel pretty comfortable at this stage of the game negotiating this and moving forward for a few more years.
Thanks.
For three years, I understand, and then we can look at it. I understand your contract is for the next five years, is that correct?
No, no, this is just a contracted, kind of perpetual contract. Basically, the fact that either we or he can cancel this contract at any time. What we said was, is in three years, we will come back probably and look at this.
Okay.
But I, just depends on what happens between now and then.
Okay, okay, okay. Any additional questions? Any additional questions or comments? No, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do want to make one final comment, and that is that we have a wonderful paramedic ambulance service. One of the things that Dr. Harrington brings to it, and it gets back to those meetings that he has with the paramedics, many times we don't fail well. When patients don't survive, our personnel have a tendency to take it very, very personally, and they did everything they could, they did everything right, it just wasn't there. And like I've always told them, I think like Sean practices, you know, we don't promise to save everybody, but what we do give them is the best chance to survive.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the system that we have in place gives them that. We give, we get so many thank yous from people who didn't have a good outcome, their families then tell us that you did all you could, and that's what I want to have in place, and that's what Sean gives us. So I appreciate your time and attention.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing that there isn't, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution Number 10-6699, authorizing renewal of professional services contract for physician services as the Fire Department's medical director with a yearly amount of $30,000 with Dr. Sean Harrington.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 10-6699, authorizing the renewal of professional services in the amount of $30,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero. Is there any other business? Not, then I'll move for an adjournment.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes four zero, we are adjourned.